Uh in the box.
I didn't have any.
It's probably an open house.
I'm usually the only one that gets my mail and I got it last time.
I get my mail like this.
I am, it's true. Get the only one that gets my mail. I'm also the only one that reads manager's report and I'm gonna put money on that.
Refreshments and you get to go on the forty from the.
Of the temple.
And you and you have to sign.
I walked the path, I opened the light, sorry.
You can still go in and look at it.
I've scheduled a massage appointment for this. It's good thing I like this.
Alright, it is six o'clock, so we are gonna call this meeting to order. And uh the first thing on our agenda as always is public comment. This is a chance for you to weigh in for three minutes if you would like to talk about an item that we'll be discussing later tonight. Or if you'd like to bring to our attention something you hope that we will address in a future meeting. So is there anyone here that would like to give public comment? Yes, sir. Why don't you go first? Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Scott Rolle. I live at fifteen eighty seven south forty five hundred west. It's the last road before you hit causeway. It's in Syracuse Ranches. Uh recently I was asking my wife why my water thing was being moved. She said she's monitoring metering my water. In the year two thousand, two thousand one, Syracuse approached us down there in that Syracuse Ranches. We all have open acre ground could sell them our water share. With the guarantee that we could use as much secondary water as we needed. Now it's getting metered. And so I I was gonna take the horse approach. My wife talked me into this approach. And so I brought it to the city council. And I mean, I understand why now I'm being metered.
Well, I'll give you a really quick answer. The legislature demanded it. So it is, it is a state law at this point that all meters in all cities will happen on every resident between now and twenty thirty. So that's what's happening.
Yeah, that li- literally.
So the agreement we had in two thousand.
The state legislature overruled it.
The state overruled it.
I can't change what the state does, so that's what it is.
And you are?
The mayor.
Did you meet you? This is the.
The city council. Uh the state legislature is a higher power than we are, anyone at this table.
I do know you have a state representative that lives right down by you, right there on analog. She's the one that would be able to change this.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else?
Brad Mills at thirty eight twenty five west twenty seven, Eric South and appropriate Syracuse. So I'm a district representative for Davis County for Farm Bureau. Um I'm here to talk to you guys about the agriculture protection plan unless on your guys' agenda. Um anyways, as a local rancher and farmer, I just wanted to talk to you guys and um kind of explaining my concern with uh hoping that we can get it changed from ten acres down to five. Syracuse is a, you know, obviously a smaller ranching community. We're not as big as what we used to be, obviously. Um but there's a lot of small farms that are not quite the ten, but are five, six, seven. Um I know the county changed theirs, so we're just hoping that maybe you guys would you know, entertain the idea of maybe changing it down to five. Just give these local guys an opportunity to be able to get their action plan from these developers and all the other issues that you know, that the action plan will help cover. So anyways, I just I'm representing Farm Bureau and representing uh you know, Syracuse City as a local venture, so. Any questions, obviously you guys can contact me and we can take care of.
So anyone else would like to present public comment? Hey, uh just fair warning that would be the only discussion. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, so this is hey. Alright, so that will be uh closed public comment. Oh, sorry, we have one written in.
Okay, so this is from Sean Gilbert. He stated, I couldn't be in attendance tonight, but wanted to put my two cents into any consideration for any future tax increases this city council may put forth. The previous increase in process that went along with the increase still bothers me. I don't think it best served our citizens and especially those that took time to come and share their stories of hardship in such a public forum. I feel that as a council, you were elected to represent the citizens of Syracuse. All of the citizens, not just personal interest circle, a horse community, or your personal opinion of what's right on any given decision. The entire population of Syracuse are at a minimum, the majority of the residents. My hopes are that the efforts and hard work by many to bring in commercial business will take effect and the impact of these commercial taxes will lessen you having to levy any increase on anyone, but especially those on fixed incomes are struggling in these difficult times. At the end of the day, just like us citizens, you can only spend what your pocketbook allows. And yes, sometimes taxes have to be increased. But exhausting all avenues and being extremely fiscally responsible right now is crucial to help everyone get through this difficult financial time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh and with that, I will move on. Our next item is a report from our Syracuse City Victims Advocate. You'll step forward. It's good to see you again. Thank you for coming out. Tell us all about your fine work.
Okay, it's gonna be short and sweet, it's only a server. Yeah, short and sweet today.
That's just fun.
Okay, so um we can go with the first slide. These are just stats from FY twenty four. Just kind of wanted to give you guys the, you know, what happened last year. Um we were able to serve three hundred and eighty one victims and this is all three cities combined. Um clearly you, we can see that females are still um being offered services more than male right now. On our quarter thirteen, we simply did not have those um that the uh those facts on the police report. And in Syracuse, we had a hundred and sixty nine victims. Um we can go down to the next slide.
Celeste, when you say FY twenty four, you run in July to June or is that, okay, thank you.
Um and then victimization data. So again, this is all three cities combined. Um clearly DV is our number one um crime that I've been working with, with victims of crime with it being two hundred and fifty one. Um next one is stalking and harassment, which is seventy three. So these are the most common victimizations we have, but obviously there's other um uh other victimizations that I also offer services to. And then this is Syracuse only. The next two slides are gonna be Clinton and Sunset. We don't have to go over those numbers. And that's something you guys are interested, I can definitely talk about, but for Syracuse, it was a hundred and eleven DV victims. Um and adult physical assault eleven, adult sexual assault ten and stalking and harassment thirty nine. DV, although these numbers are for FY twenty four, I have definitely seen an increase in these last few months. Um it's kind of, it's getting really busy, especially you know, with all the new buildings and apartments and townhomes are going in um more people just equals simply equals more crime. So we're de- I'm definitely trying to prepare myself for that. Um with being a little more organized, with everything offering as many resources that I can possible and reaching out to many victims as possible as I can. And the services provided. So the bolded numbers are the ones for Syracuse stats and the ones in parentheses are the ones um come in all three cities combined. Um information on criminal justice process. It's definitely one of the most common because it just explains, you know, how our CJ system works after providing with um victim rights, information, how to obtain the notification and referrals to other um resources. Lately, I've been referring a lot of victims to Tepanova's Legal Center. They offer legal services to victims of crime. Um and they go based off how much they make, so they go based off their income. And you know, it can go from being free of charge or just, you know, depending on how much they make. They can help with civil issues, so divorce custody issues um and protective orders and anything, you know, that might fall into those categories. Then crisis intervention, emotional support. That's just a lot of um just, you know, being that person that they need to speak to. And notification happens quite often because I'm just notifying them of every um court, new court date that's going on. That can be either through letters in the mail, phone calls, text messages has definitely been a really good one that I've noticed I've used a lot these last year or so. Um and email, email has been a good one too. Sometimes, you know, I use all of the above. It just kind of depends case by case scenario. So what's new? I'm sure everyone knows what, you know, what we submitted the vow. I just kind of wanted to go over it briefly, just to see if anyone has any questions about it. Um I just um basically kind of go over it real quick. So beginning FY twenty six, we, I I am, I did speak to Steve about this and HR Shawna and Katie about administering surveys. So we were able to um beginning in July, we're going to, I'm going to start administering surveys through Survey Monkey. And that's going to be able to allow us to see, you know, where we need to improve our services um in the program, um what they need from us, what we can do better, um and kind of go from there. And they get to grade me as well. So that's great, right? We always want to know how your victim advocate is doing. So that's something that the survey is gonna be able to help us out with. Um the VOWA grant is um we can go on to the next slide and then I'll come back to summer activities. But this right here is um just to summarize the whole thing, the goal is to hopefully get our grant where we can get a part timer victims advocate that works twenty five hours a week who's covered by this grant and we would be splitting a match of twenty. That is a typo. It's twenty five percent. I forgot to fix that, so I, my apologies. So it's twenty five percent of a split um in match that we would have to split between all three cities. It goes based off the same way we go with our VOGA, you know, depending on how many cases I handled. Um so that's how we would be splitting the match. Then um they'll be able to provide the same thing I do. The biggest difference is they can only specifically focus on those um crimes that we have listed above, which is domestic violence, sex assault, stalking, dating violence, and recently added the female genital mu- mutilation. Um so and then I would be taking care of the other ones that obviously are not on that list and those as well. So that's kind of how it would be um to summarize how those cases would be handled with the new part timer would be, I would be assigning those cases to that um part timer, so they can go over them and basically do what I do and just kind of help out with the case though. That's definitely growing. Do you guys have any questions about this? And then um no, so summer activities, summer activities are coming up, so that's always fun. Uh the Syracuse days, Clinton days, um sunset mental health days that they moved to September, which is awesome because it's not as hot. Um last year I was very pregnant in the heat, so that was not very fun. Um but I'm excited for the new summer activities. I've heard there's a few out there that I'm kind of interested in. I think it's something related to mental health and I think it's about what Davis behavioral as well, where they do it here at Founder's Park, I believe.
Illumination?
Yes, so I would like to get in contact with them to see if maybe I can set up a table.
They're right over here.
You'll be happy to help.
The right place, right time.
Business phone number, that would be great. So yeah, I that's, I actually heard about that last um Syracuse days. I think it was just a um just a community member who approached me and asked me if I was part of that and I, I didn't even know that was a thing. So I'm really excited to reach out, see if I can just, you know, get some, but uh just hand out information about victim service program or kind of go from there. So that's kind of where we're at. Do you guys have any questions, concerns?
We'd be happy to have you.
I think if the construction companies can put a booth up out there, so could you.
I I was curious about something you heard. I just want to make sure I heard it right. So so you had mentioned there was, had been an increase in Syracuse. At least in the past couple of years. And what did you say was leading, kind of driving some of that? You mentioned apartments and townhomes. I wasn't sure the correlation.
No, you're good. I was just saying, you know, that when the population increase, crime is going to increase. It's just something that happens. Um that's just what.
Families in quote close quarters.
More in the apartments and townhomes, like when they're tighter like that?
Yeah, I have seen a lot in the new apartment. Based off my numbers, I, that's what I've seen, but we can definitely get you more specific.
I would love to get more information on that. Just i- if there are provisions we need to do to try and and make some of these areas safer, and and if we ever have to do any of this kind of stuff again, we'd just like to have that information to make sure we do things right.
Yeah, no, of course. I think it just really comes down to, you know, more people um in our city and it's just bound to um happened. Um but we can definitely, the way to make sure that we stay on top of things is to uh make sure we have all those resources available to them and just hit as many people as we can. Um and hopefully just and keep continue to improve our program. You have any comments about that, chief?
Yeah, I I just, I hate to give you that. Yeah, I I can talk to you later right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is a quick report from uh Communities That Care regarding activities that are planned for the month of May. Who's here representing?
Seth Seth is the current chair.
Hi guys, uh mayor, council. We appreciate you having us out. Um I'm just gonna sit back here for a second. Would you be able to display our brief presentation? So um many of you guys are aware of what communities. I'm Celeste Hopkins. We're, we actually are glad that uh you're timed so well with Celeste because I think what we're gonna talk about is it's very correlated, so how we're still Celeste.
I know, I know.
No, that's great. Thank you so much. Uh so we wanted to briefly touch on a few things uh related to the North Davis Communities That Care or NDCTC as we're often referred to as. Uh Julie sits on uh our uh board as well, uh as a liaison from the council. We're really grateful for her and uh we've had great opportunities to meet with Mayor Mon and also uh Councilman Savage uh to talk about why this is such an important uh initiative and such an important group that um and you know, topics that we're, that we're interested in. So uh we wanted to give you some brief announcements, uh go into mental health awareness. You see it's titled mental health awareness rather than mental health health awareness month, which is May. And we'll talk about why in just a second. Uh some of our current projects and then just kind of conclude with some of our, our takeaways. So if you want to go ahead and scroll down for us, that'd be great. Uh and so if you're not familiar with the North Davis CTC, uh we are a group of engaged uh community members, leaders, uh friends, family members all throughout Syracuse, Sunset, Clinton, West Point and Clearfield. Who have a uh an invested interest in our youth and ensuring that they are growing up in safe communities. Uh we do that through um that bottom bulk point there, identifying uh risk factors and protective factors in our community to ensure that kids have access to the resources they need and have information and uh safe, again, protective factors to prevent those uh those behaviors and and adverse effects. Um some of our current priorities, uh they're all based on data, right? We do this based on data. Everything we do is evidence-based and we use the SHARP survey, uh which our youth uh participate in throughout our schools. And so uh we identify risk and protective factors through these data collection points and then we put in action plans to uh to again, prevent some of those uh behaviors and also to strengthen communities. Um and so um you can go and scroll down. And so really exciting, some of our announcements, this last year we were awarded a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in a federal grant. Uh it's a five-year, hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per year grant. Uh and that's the drug-free communities grant. Uh and thanks to you guys and your community or your matching support, we were able to draw down these funds. And so uh Syracuse committed, what is it, nine thousand?
Thousand six, nine point six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we wanted to come and report back uh our gratitude for that. So thank you for that, your fair tax contributions. Uh we also wanted to give a shout out to the police department. Last month you had uh the CTC out to train on mental health first aid. Uh which is uh a really great opportunity to strengthen our law enforcement partners in our community uh in dealing with mental health. Uh which we know is probably one of the law enforcement's least favorite things to deal with, right? I mean, you're, you're there to to um intervene in what may seem like a criminal activity, but when it's related to mental health, it uh creates a whole new dimension, lots of other factors that come into play. So uh we are grateful for our law enforcement in our community. And then finally, do you want to just briefly mention the, the um youth boost at elimination?
Yes, um I'm the uh I'm the secretary for project illumination. I'm a good voice to talk about. It is a our theme this year. In fact, it was our beginning theme, kind of got off track for a couple of years, but in the spine of spark. And it will be on the sixth of uh September this year. And we appreciate Cresta for making the Founder's Park available to us. And what we do is we have there some, we will have there some booths that will allow kids to come in and see things that other kids are doing and maybe catch a spark in something that they are, have, I'm interested in. One of the things that is a protective factor for children is is the strong family attachment. And so we make this a family activity. There will be food trucks there, but it ends with a great fireworks display, the best of the valley.
Really, I agree.
It is really good. The fellow who puts this on is a pyromaniac. He he loves it. And his family was into pyrotechnics for years and years and years. And he writes a script when there is music that companies are and it's wonderful. We haven't seen it, you need to see it. But our, our, our responsibility this year is it is going to be about helping kids connect the spark. Now, one of the things we mentioned from CTC is that we have some grant money available to youth groups. For example, youth court, if you want to apply for a grant from CTC, we can help fund your youth court. Anything that is youth-based that you would ask to reach, we want to be involved and we can help you with some of that.
And and those grants are up to a thousand dollars per group. Uh there is a little wire in this presentation and I think we might just distribute that out later, but um that's uh available to any of the youth groups that that want to apply. There's a QR code you can get on there and and uh apply. So uh now briefly, we wanted to talk about what we, what we can do for mental health awareness. Uh and again, we, we talked about it being mental health awareness, not necessarily mental health awareness month, because we don't think it begins and ends with May. Uh this is an everyday uh challenge and everyday important uh facet of an individual's life. And so um we talked about some four ideas. We, a few years ago, we came forward with the CTC and did some trainings. We did uh QPR training or uh suicide prevention training. Uh wasn't the best turnout, but I'll, obviously we'd love to to grow from there. We talked about continuing that and it's kind of fallen off our plates a little bit, so we want to come back and and commit to that. And so we talked about potentially offering uh an adult mental health first aid or a youth mental health first aid. These are all-day classes. Uh they're free and we'd love to come in with the CTC and and train to those. Uh if that's something you guys are interested in, uh we have our Everyday Strong program uh to help uh adults learn how to uh grow resilience in your children's lives. Uh and then we have a youth mentor training program. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, and Chris and I have talked about this. We know that it can't make it mandatory, but we want to, we want to help train mentors in your recreational programs on how to reach kids and how to keep them engaged with their family and with, with things that are good, good sparks like athletics and those kinds of things. Now, we know you can't make it mandatory, but we would be more than happy to come and teach that mentoring class to any of the seasons that you do. We're glad to be back there.
So annual charge to the city. We'd love to do that and we do that through our grant uh funds and through you guys' support. So uh help us help each other. Um and so I should just go down to the next slide. We're kind of wrapping up here, but we wanted to highlight a few of our current projects. And so um this summer as it's coming forward, we've got a lot of kids that are, that have parents still, you know, working. They don't get summer break like some, uh some of them do. And so uh we have our summer school programs at some of our Title I schools. Uh which allows kids to, you know, participate in pro-social activities and sports and learning and science and STEM, all kinds of great activities. And so uh that's something we're doing through our grant funds. Uh like Mike mentioned, we also have our youth uh group mini-grants that we're accepting applications for. The flyers on the next slide. Uh we are doing some after-school programming at several of our schools, uh which is really fun, clubs and and just again, ways to, to keep kids engaged and out of trouble. Uh and then we're doing our Catch My Beth program, which we've done at Syracuse Arts Academy in Buffalo Point and still available for other uh schools in the community, uh which is a vaping pre- prevention program. Um and teaches some of the, some of the things that you may not be aware of, like, you know, I don't know how many of you are aware that, you know, they make vape uh cartridges that come in the drawstrings of your hoodies, right? And you can just sit there and stick it in your mouth and and vape off that. So those are the things you'd want to be aware of if you're a parent, right? Um and then to go down to you, so it's our uh mini-grants application.
Check all the hoodies.
So again, there's the, the application, the QR code. And then finally, we've got one more slide for you. Um we wanted to highlight our family programs. Uh we do parenting and family programs to again, strengthen those skills, building for parents and relationship building with uh parents and youth. Um and we'd love to bring some uh to Syracuse if you guys decided you wanted to support that. Um and we're offering this summer the Strengthening Families Program online. Uh we've got tons of scholarships that are still available that we pre, prepaid for. And then one of the fun things I really like, uh and Mayor Mon, you were aware of this, when we came met with you uh recently, uh we are participating with the Health Department in uh in and the Police Department with uh tobacco checks. And so we're going into any retailer that uh that sells tobacco. Um and we are doing, you know, kind of like the mock sales with uh with youth who are underage. And we are recognizing our clerks in our community who don't sell to teens uh or underage individuals. Uh we've got a signed card coming from uh uh the mayor and the police chief. Uh and we also offer a little uh gift card for the clerk who did that. Uh the opposite is uh is not a gift card. It's a fine and it's a pretty steep fine depending on the type of retailer you are. Uh if you're uh, you know, a convenience store, it's not as high necessarily as if you were a tobacco-selling uh location. And so it's a pretty hefty fine and potential suspension of a business license uh and other jurisdictional-related punishments. And so it's a really cool thing. We'd love to, we'd love to do an highlight. Um and then finally, community service. We've committed ourselves every quarter that provides some community service. And that's kind of a, an ask to you guys. Uh last quarter, we participated in a food pantry pickup in Clearfield. Uh but we were, we are, we have all these little subgroups uh and subcommittees within our coalition and one of them's related to service and families and and all kinds of cool subgroups that we would love to come forward. If you guys want us to come out and wear our goofy shirts and come out and clean up a park, if you want us to, we're not gonna volunteer and put up any fences, Chris, I promise. But we'll come up and pick up trash or we'll do whatever you guys want. If there's something you're interested in, uh we'd love to come forward and do some service in your community. Do you want to talk anymore about your, your cards? You got those cool cards.
Yeah, we supported, uh CTC was present uh at the bunny event at our Easter egg hunt on Saturday. Uh and we were co-sponsored by the Lions Blood Beer Local. And we handed out these particular packets. Uh one of our biggest, big uh 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 teaching points is the value of parent to child communication. So these chit-chat cards were passed out to those who wanted them at the Easter egg hunt. And it is a, it is a way for parents to sit down and chat with their kids and ask them, ask questions of parents and parents ask questions of kids and learn a little bit about more. We had two hundred of these cards and we gave a hundred of them out on the, with the Easter hunt, but we were no match for the Easter bunny. Or the eggs out on the field. But we will support every activity that Syracuse does. CTC will be there in one form. So just let us know about the town. Now, I have two of these. That's what was left over from Saturday, but if any of you, who has young children in this room? But would like to send these cars to sit down.
If anyone else out there wants, let, let them have it first.
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's perfect.
Anybody else, anybody else have young children?
I think Jordan's got it.
I think Jordan's got the most.
Just one last thing, Mr. Mon. Uh we just wanted to close with uh we love again for your ideas around service. If that's, if you have something, if you have some feedback or or thoughts around mental health awareness uh and trainings we can do, we'd love to get your uh your ideas or if you'd like us to come out, we're happy to do that. Again, push your kids to do the uh youth mini-grants. Uh we have our online class and hopefully this in-person family, uh parent family class would be, would be great if that's what you guys would like. We're here to support you guys. And let us come back and and tell you how Illumination was at six o'clock.
We would like to also come back after Illumination in September and report back to you and see what we could do better. We really appreciate Syracuse lending us the use of Commerce Park and the state and everything else. Any other questions for that?
I have a couple of questions. Uh number one, um I just want to say thank you for what you guys do. Uh I love the CTC events. I love the, the push for mental health. Um but my question is um I love what you were doing, the selfie method. Is that still part of any of these courses?
Selfie method will be part of Illumination. Those five uh topics will be discussed by youth in their rooms. The rest of them will all be about Catch My Spark. So the selfie method will still be used.
Okay, so I, I love that app. I love the message that thing brought in and so I was curious if that was still in the classes. Okay, yeah. Um so I guess I think one question.
Hey, let's move on to our next items, our planning items. We invite Noah up. Uh the first item is recommendation from planning commission, application for zone change for property located at twenty eight hundred south, fourteen hundred west. Uh this is an A one to an R two. The applicant is Chase Stevenson. Noah, give us a little uh brief on this.
Uh you know, there's, there's not much more than what you already said. Planning Commission reviewed it. They're ordering a recommendation for approval.
Anybody have any questions or discussion on this point?
We started straightforward, meets the zoning of the surrounding area.
Okay, so uh if nobody has any objections, we can put this on consent for the next calendar in May. Alright, we'll move that forward with uh to consent. The next one is recommendation from planning commission, application for general plan amendment uh and zone change from property located at two thousand west, twenty seven hundred south, residential R one to R three. Uh, and zone change from property located at two thousand West, twenty-seven hundred South, residential R1 to R3. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the split, how this is, it can we split this like this and.
These are different law, yeah.
Because it it cuts the property in half where this works.
So what you bring up a great point, and this was brought up at planning commission as well, and the point being that generally. Uh, zoning uh follows uh property lines, but there are several places in our city and many cities. That it doesn't actually follow that, and it would just depend on the use. So the uh reason why this is not a problem. Uh, according to state law is you can be a one owner of a great big parcel and have different uses. So we are allowed to do zone different on a large property.
Generally speaking, though, you you don't want split zoning because of management issues. They're planning a. Uh, they are pre-planning on doing a a trade so that the. A a land trade so that the new zoning would match the the new property lines.
And often if you get, uh, if you end up subdividing things into lots or into developments, it all ends up. Uh, new property lines anyway, so that's why uh doing this ahead of a development is not a problem because we'll all have to apply for. Uh, new lot lines.
Answer my legal question.
Anyone else?
No, so this was, this is the one that we have, we looked at a little while ago.
Yep.
And we did the commercial update on the one lot. The other one we left as it was. This is just extending the commercial. What's that?
Wasn't it for that reason, splitting the?
Uh, no, they were two different owners. One wanted to change, the other one didn't.
Yeah, so now the south owner that was objecting to change it, his part to commercial, he's worked, he's working with the. Owner of the north parcel now and they're. They're working together to to get some development going on the corner. Um, remember before it was request to go to PRD? And so now he's backed off that. It's actually a different group that was really pushing the PRD. And now they're requesting the R3, which is a single-family zone, which is. The only part that's R3 is the non-frontage land, so everything that has frontage is now commercial.
Proposed to be.
Proposed to be.
Proposed to be, thank you.
He's getting so much more comfortable, isn't he?
Any other thoughts?
Love it.
I, we can't ask for it, but it would be nice to kind of understand what they're hoping to put in here, but. Uh, this, this is the right zone for this area, so.
Well, we already did the commercial part.
Okay, I'm going to leave this for discussion on the next meeting, uh, but we'll move it along through no questions tonight. Okay, the next item, uh, I'm going to table or ask us to table because it's part of uh. Something that just got requested to change since the packet was released. So they're gonna come back with some other parts to that. Is that all right?
The three or two?
Three. Okay, so we'll table that one for tonight, bring it back at the rest of its parts. Uh, I'm pro that because I would like this to finish it all at once and not be doing it in pieces. Number four is the request from Councilman DeCarver to consider proposed text amendment uh to allow uh now five acre uh. Agricultural Protection Agency areas instead of ten. Nelson Carver, would you like to discuss?
Don't, the the table that you have a hoop, the the tape, okay, so the table that's on here. Words agricultural protection area and not found a city code. I believe they default to the county. Um, if people apply for it within those cities, I know West Bountiful's not on here, neither is Bountiful. On that one, and this map also is a little misleading um for the parcels that are approximately seventy-two with ten or more acres. And then a hundred and eighty-nine parcels of five or more acres within the city. If you look at some of these that are highlighted, there's already things on them and there's already developments going in, so. There's not quite near, like, we have some city buildings and city properties that are highlighted on here, so that's not quite correct. Um, and a lot of these aren't even in agricultural zone areas. So the number on that is quite a bit high for how many would be for five acres or more. So it. Uh, when it says in here that it would limit the city to whether or not it would get. Be able to impose eminent domain. Uh, that would be the doubt, the drawback of not approving it. A lot of these places that are five acres with and more are on. Main roads or things like that in our general plan. If you cross-reference them over top, overlap them against each other, they don't really coincide with. Just, I believe it's just the Briggs property that actually does. The rest of them don't have. Where we would extend the road over like two thousand one ninety-three. All those have already been extended, so that's just my correction on.
Anyone want to make a case for or against?
I guess my question is, what, so so what does ag protection give you over A1? Other than people aren't allowed to complain?
Well, our farm bureau person is right here. And I feel like they can answer that better than we can, than I can. This is why we have work sessions, is to ask the people who know more than we do.
I I I need, I need help understanding because I can't. Honestly, I I I understand that ag protection.
So, one of the, one of the things is if you're buying, say if you're buying a house.
Okay.
Right next somewhere next to Ag. If you're out of state and you're buying a house, one of those things is your realtor has to let you know you're moving in next to agricultural land. Because one of the biggest issues. With building in ag areas is the complaints that new residents make. About the agricultural things that are taking place, like, I don't know if anybody remembers the big thing about the tractors going at four thirty in the morning, cutting hay. Couple of years back. That tells them that before you even move in here, we have to legally tell you this is an agriculturally protected area that you're moving up next. Against you, so there will be agricultural things taking place. So it informs residents that are buying, planning to buy in Syracuse also. So they're not just going into it blind, like, we have a problem over on. Three thousand with someone who moved in next to the horse property and they continuously complain about the smell of the horses, but they moved in next to it. If they were protected, they would have had to notify them beforehand. Well, they moved from California and they said, well, my realtor didn't tell me. Well, that's not. The person who owns the livestock.
And I hope it's apparent that, you know, I hope you at least looked at the house and be like, horses back there.
Not all real estate pictures have pictures of the surrounding property. It's usually, unless it's an aerial, it's usually just the property within the fence itself.
So I feel like our A1 already has a lot of protections in it. Admittedly, the four thirty in the morning, on on five acres, I I I need to under. I mean, sound travels a ways. I don't know if I want every five acre lot. Cutting hay.
I believe the Will Cox is less than five acres. There's are less than ten acres, but more than five.
Okay.
And they do pumpkins and they have a prolific farm stand and things like that, and they're out there. For four thirty in the morning, so it's not.
So they're, they're operating without an act protection right now.
In in A1, but they.
That sounds like they're okay.
But they still receive the complaints from it. They still receive the people that are moving in. That don't realize, and it has a lot to do with people coming to the state. It does. That's one of the things was that there's a lot of people moving from other states to Utah. And they throw a bit about the ag situations in Utah, and it's like, well, you live next and you can't. And that was one of the main reasons for the Agricultural Protection Act, is to protect small farms from having to deal with all of it. And Syracuse is one of the largest growing cities, so our small farmers face that on a regular basis.
Hey, I I just don't know that that. So, so we're trying to create an A1 plus zone kind of thing where or anyone with an agricultural. Anyone with an A1 could apply for agricultural protection and and the difference is they can mow, they they can cut hay at four thirty.
There's, there's other things. There's more specifics in it. That's what I said. We have our farm bureau person right here.
I excluded a one-pager.
The rider.
Yeah, it it does, you know, you guys already covered it, you know, it's it's noise, it smells. Herbicides and it does require that any plat next to it gets a label put on. Put on there, and then there is some protections against eminent domain and you can't rezone the property without their consent.
I feel like that's generally.
Herbicides are a big deal too.
So those aren't protected with A1, but so it's not a zone, but it's like, it's a legal protection.
And not all A1 can apply for it. It's if you're actively far, just because the land is A1 doesn't mean it's being actively farmed. Doesn't mean it's being actively used for agriculture. It may just be a sitting field, which we have a few of those in Syracuse.
So if you stop farming, does the act protection expire?
Um, it does a twenty-year cycle.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, yeah.
But they they can farm the first year and then for nineteen years, it's it's.
I think it can come back. I think it come, can come back for discussion if it's an abandoned situation.
If if they're going to develop it, they actually remove the.
Protection Act on it, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It's like this, the only person is protects them. Only protecting from eminent domain.
And and that's a big deal also, like it it uh, if you read the way this is worded, like you just rearranged the wording. It helps protect farmers from the cities taking their land that they don't want to sell.
So I'm going to give you the feedback that I got. I completely uninformed on this, and so I reached out to the county. And uh, the county commissioners referred referred me to the planning department and Jeff Oylord responded to me, and he said. First of all, you need to know that we are in discussions of reversing this and going back to ten acres. Because it's been a problem for this, the county. And I said, okay, what kind of problem? Help me understand. And um, he says the problem comes when. People next to an ag protection zone want to develop their land because now they have the protections. To a neighbor that affect their land value. Because you can't do things on the neighboring land if it is interfered with by the protection zone. And so you've got other families who may have farmland next to it. That now are handicapped by allowing small parcels. He says it makes sense on big parcels. Now, this is again what the county said. It makes sense on big parcels because the farming is more extensive. But he says, if you get under ten acres, it's usually more animal-related and less crop-related. That doesn't mean that that's a hundred percent. He said that's usually what he said. And he said that's usually where you have the problems with developers trying to get uh the access to that land.
Yeah, I mean, at any given time, any farmer. Really, the only thing that's to protect themselves is from themselves because they'd have to go through a process to sell their land.
Yeah.
And yeah, I guess the the city from those mean city council members going in and taking their land, which. I don't, I've never really seen that happen.
Uh, we have once, we we took just a piece of land up next to the round.
You don't didn't use eminent domain to do it.
No, they didn't. They bought out.
They 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 off, they they bought them. I don't think they didn't.
I think they did manage it a couple.
Okay.
What was that?
I don't think that was a farm situation.
Yeah. But most of the, they they generally will just offer a price, and people usually don't want to live next to a freeway, so.
Anyway, I'm, you know, I'm open to where you want to go with this, but the. The county's pushback was, we're actually reconsidering this right now actively.
Yeah, I I I don't have strong feelings either way. I just don't understand the need.
I'm just, yeah, I'm trying to figure the, I guess, the problem we're trying to solve.
I didn't know they were trying to reconsider it.
I I guess I I would love to maybe talk to you after and then it gets, get get a better understanding.
Okay, so we um. I guess the question is, does this have any support to go forward?
I need to understand it better. I I I should be better informed, but I'm, I'm just, this is not my expertise.
I I I don't see, uh, again. I could be convinced otherwise, I guess. I just don't understand the problem we're solving, but.
I'm not seeing a salute. I'm I'm not seeing the problem that we need to fix, yeah.
That's kind of where I'm at right now.
The county has something that works, then what's the point?
Well, we we don't have to align with the county.
We do not, but that's, I I'm just sharing.
Actually, the 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 goal was to align with Green Belt, not with the county, because Green Belt is five acres. So if you have five acres that you are farming. Then you can apply for Green Belt. So it's only logical for that to apply the same as Green Belt, though.
Protection. Maybe I need.
I feel like it goes hand in hand.
Property taxes.
Yeah.
And APA is protections of nuisance claims and things like that.
I don't think they're the same.
So they're not really related.
One, one's a tax status.
One's a tax status, one's a uh. Uh, noise protection or or. So yeah, I I I could use some more help on this one before I I can make a good decision.
Okay, here's what I'm going to do then. I will leave it up to the council to do some research. And let me know if you'd like it back on the future agenda. But right now I don't see the support, but there may be, if you get back to me and say I'd like to see it on a future agenda, it will come back. Okay? All right, item number F, review and discussion of proposed dispatch services agreement uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Who's going to represent this? Yeah, this is pretty fundamental. It's.
It's a one-year agreement. We are going to u- use Davis County for um our dispatch. For recent fire, fire is determined by number of calls, the cost is. And the cost for uh our police is determined by number of sworn officers. So that's gone up a little bit. They updated the number to our current number. Our calls have gone up too, so that's, that's gone up a little bit, but it's a one-year deal with the county. Um. Any questions?
Do we have, is there like a different?
There's no other option at this point. When when the consolidation happened, was it two years ago?
Leyton's the only one with their own, right?
The, well, Leyton is the one that operates all the hours now. Oh, no, they're having.
This county operates ours.
Okay.
Yeah, county operates ours, but they work with Leyton.
They work through.
There's, there's a virtual connection.
Sorry, I asked such a confusing question.
It is a virtual consolidation, so so they share the same information, software. But they are different dispatch centers, you know, giving the calls to the.
And the south end of the county has always been their own dispatch anyway, so that's the only options available in this county.
Steve is not fully, once again, strikes again.
There is, there is.
No, go ahead. You might answer what I was gonna ask.
I might, I might not.
I can see.
Um, so you have, you have the Bountiful Dispatch for South Metro. You have Davis County. And then you have Leyton, which actually took their fields or their field, they merged, merged, yeah, so. Um, there has been discussions and and processes and. Movement in consolidating dispatch into fewer and fewer in the county. But currently there are three, right? Uh, that are going to be operating this upcoming year. There is, there is discussion about, you know, we may have the option of going to some, you know, another one like Leyton instead. There there's discussion going on about that, but uh, that's not really possible this upcoming year, so.
How does that affect us? What does it overlap? Because I know we do a lot of Clearfield and Clearfield comes out a lot if we need an overlap. Are they on the same channel? Like, how's that work? I don't know how any of that works.
They've never been. They, we can monitor, so I mean, it's not like we can't have communication and the dispatch centers can talk to each other, so. Something gets routed improperly, starts in Leyton. Somebody, like they say, improperly routed to Leyton, they can deal with it all, so to get through um. But we've never been on the direct same channel, but either Clearfield or Leyton.
Like, I know when we had three centers, it didn't happen very often. Every now and then we called, we'd get lost in the minutia or something. Does that improve with the system?
Yeah, the consolidated servers. Has, oh, yeah.
Fantastic. Okay, I mean, like, to date, this is the only option, so I think we need to move forward.
I would recommend this go on consent because we don't really have enough. For the next fiscal year. It is one year we're committing to. All right, we'll move that to consent. Item G, uh, review and discussion proposed amendments to the Syracuse City Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. Steve, if you'd like to.
Yeah, you guys have had this for quite a, quite some time now to review. I'll I'll stop up the questions. I do want to say one thing. We do have a state law. Mandate coming. Uh, for our child sex abuse training and background policy. It's not in the packet tonight. But we're going to finalize that and have it in the packet for this meeting uh coming up. It is a time-sensitive, um, I'll seal it down. Other than that, do you guys have questions?
The other time-sensitive tweak was, um, I mean, it will, it will be in the packet. Is some cleanup language on our uh the nepotism uh regulations in the in the city. Uh, there's two that kind of conflict with each other. We'll just clean that open. You'll have that in.
Do you guys have questions with what's in the packet?
No, it was pretty straightforward.
I had one question, but uh, hold on. Oh, yeah. Uh, the meals, the city may pay employees a per game amount to cut. The what?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, to cut the other QR code, yeah. Uh, during traveler training, so. This base. This basically says that you're, if the. Conference offers a breakfast, then they don't receive it for breakfast. If it has lunch, they don't receive it for lunch. It's but. Basically forcing them that this is where you have to eat, no dietary. Questions asked, none of this, so we're taking this way, so you have to eat here unless you pay for it yourself and we don't care what they're serving.
Actually, all conferences nowadays have a requirement to reach out with the registration and ask if they're ready to diet.
I went to three and I have not had anybody or anything say, does there? I I mean, I. I I'm not willing to go off just of your your experience, of just mine, for every conference that we send our employees to. But I feel like that's, that's a little much. That's like really pushing, like the rest of it I can understand, but that's like. Really?
That's a great point, and we could add something in here that says.
Let's our specific dietary restrictions.
Then then you're you're still down the premium. That'd be a simple.
I'm under that change, but by and large, this is how every trip that I go on for my work. Um we just use the government per diems and it's it's the same thing. We have to check which box, which which meals were provided, so this is pretty standard.
I've never done that with any conference I've gone to. I've never been asked, I don't know. This was totally new, seeing this. I've never seen this anywhere, so I don't.
I've been doing this for twenty years.
I would like to see it on a piece of paper where this is a normal thing.
Yeah, maybe any any other defense contractors will tell you this is how.
Okay, we're not a defense contractor. And we're just barely using cola, so now we're falling in line.
Yeah, I think the intent, you know, originally on this particular ones.
When it's convenient.
You're you're paying, you're paying for the lunch. The city's paying. Your registration fee. And then if you got the per diem on top of it, the city would be paying for a lunch again.
And I get that, but this is just so like, if it's there, we're not paying you anything, it's. There's certain circumstances that that just makes it to where you're just putting it on the employee and. I don't, I mean, I'm certain there are employees that enjoy going to conferences, but a lot of people just, it's more. You're going because you have to go for your job. It's not an enjoyable thing. You're going to learn new stuff. I have not enjoyed any conference I've been on recently, but I've gone and learned a lot of stuff. So that's just, that feels like it's just one more kick in like. Sorry, you can't have gluten or anything like that, but tough luck.
I mean, honestly, if someone had that issue and that was the situation. I think we would have given them the the per diem, but but it's not, it's not explicit in.
And it turns out in our HR, you have to be very explicit, so.
Yeah, we can add dietary issues in here. That's no problem.
Yeah, yeah, council's all right with that. On going back on, I I wanna explain on that nepotism rule. What what's the correction is, is if a person, um it says a person who's hired. Uh or promoted, they can't um be in the in the same line of supervision, so. You can't be related to your boss or your boss's boss, right? Um or your boss's boss's boss and so forth, so that that that's the indirect one. Um but then it also said later that uh no employee who is related to anyone else in the department could be a supervisor. Those two things conflict because we now we have departments that are large enough. Where you could be a frontline supervisor and you would never supervise your cousin who's in a totally different division. But this would prevent us from hiring a person.
Or promoting.
Or promoting, really. So that's the correct.
So Uncle Dave is crappy at his job, but I can't get promoted because he's up, was here before me.
That's a problem.
Yeah, that's a problem.
It's just correcting that from.
And that language is not in your packet tonight, and it will be.
Not my language. We should, it'd be very more direct.
Blurred out.
Be way more direct.
It's a little crazy that we've gotten to this point, actually. It's grown that much. But there are, well, but there are inherent problems because you get to a point where. If you've got people very invested and yet they can't be promoted because they work in, say, or cross department. Uh assigned even because they work in the same department as someone they're related to.
But we don't do that if they're friends, you know, like you, oh, your best friend is a a. Manager, you can't be promoted because he's your best, like, we don't do that. Why would we do it with family?
Sounds like we're actually loosening that up a little bit.
I know, that's what we're talking about.
I'm assuming there's case law involved in nepotism and.
It's all the find in state statute.
So it's really not up to us as much as it is the state law.
And I I I was, I'd love to see it.
The state law?
So I'll be discussion in a future meeting. Okay, all right, let's go on to the KPIs. You've seen these for a couple of meetings and had a chance to review them. We haven't had a lot of feedback in meetings, so we're gonna kind of say this is the final time. And vote on them in the following meeting, so so anybody got any changes they'd like to make last minute on what we've been. Putting out there for most of this year.
And most changes are just responses to your previous comments.
Yeah, the adding in the surveys and stuff.
It's seen that I'm gonna move us on from this and just put it on the next agenda for approval. Uh now we're gonna move into discussion of the FY twenty six budget. The first item on the uh discussion item is changes to the recruitment retention policy. Steve, you gotta come right back up here. You're the numbers guy. We are in a position where we have to modify this policy. We cannot keep up with what's here.
Yeah, we've we've had a discussion internally um and looking at the policy, we've considered several options and several sub options. Of those options. Um and in looking at it, we we think it probably makes sense at at this point to. Uh have a have sort of a temporary measure. Uh we do know that the current trajectory of our recruitment retention policy is. Um is putting a strain on our finances uh to a point that it's not sustainable. Um according to our projections, so we do need, we do know that we need to amend the policy or at least reevaluate it. But doing it in such a short timeframe, right before, you know, we're trying to get a budget together. Uh we're not really capable, I think, at this point to to vet it fully. And run scenarios within the timeframe we have. Um and the 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 various number of of uh scenarios that we have on the table. So what we think is is the best course of action is to do a temporary measure um for one year at least. Uh and then we can pick up in July or August and and actually start reevaluating the policy.
Temporary measure, option one.
It's very, yeah, basically what you saw in the um in the packet for the the budget retreat is what we.
Would be the one year option.
Is what we have as the proposal.
It fits within the one-year budget. It's manageable. And um I guess what we're saying is, we don't have to commit beyond that. At this point, we can spend more time. On where we land as an overall policy, but for this year, we have to have a plan in place in time to make these other decisions. So we're suggesting. Uh whatever that is, I'm not telling you what that plan is, but we have to have a plan that at least is in place for this coming fiscal year.
On on that option one, we do think we can budget um and and bring that multiplier down to one point five. Uh before the benchmarks get uh into play, whereas we're talking two, has to be twice the. The the URS rate before people get a benchmark. We can, we can drop that to one point five and it still fits in the budget.
I like the concept of that, of option one, when we talk, when it's presented at the budget retreat.
I like that, one point five with cola, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm gonna go forward as if that's the plan right now. There's much uh many other factors in the plan. The next is, uh I'm gonna invite Chief Atkins to the table. Don't go anywhere, Steve, you're you're gonna be right back. We have a situation that I'd like him to present.
So, council, basically what was in your packet was um. The mayor gave an assignment to all department heads to look through budgets and try and find ways to cut within this budget year. So Assistant Chief Davis and I went through ours and we basically identified the two positions that we currently have that are open. Um and they would be assigned uh in our structure as one of them being a traffic officer and one of them being a dare officer. So we looked at this and said, if the council wanted to hold those two positions, basically freeze those for a year. Then you can save the money from the salaries, you can save the money from some of the other budget associated items. And these two positions have minimal impact on patrol staffing and investigation. Um efforts, so there's really not uh. I don't worry so much about not having them because they're not impacting those two sides directly. Um I put in some information for you about the our dare program and the training and how that's offered. Uh I also gave you some timing on um when we could get people into the academy and what we're looking to do with that. And I gave you the graph that would tell you exact, shouldn't say exactly, approximately how much you would save. The one I can't tell you for sure is the dispatch these, they gave it to us as if we had thirty-one officers. And I don't know that right now they're gonna let me renegotiate that down to twenty-nine. But I can certainly ask. We know that we wouldn't have these for the year, so I can certainly ask and if it changes. Yeah, and if it changes, we'd be able to get that back to you. So um that's, that's the first part of it. The reason I asked for this to be on there is it was in the budget. Slides that was part of our retreat a couple of weeks ago, but didn't get specifically addressed. And if anybody missed it or had concerns and wanted it addressed, I didn't wanna move forward if I didn't know this was your direction. So didn't wanna move forward filling, excuse me. So those are the, that's the first piece of it, and then so the first goal basically, like whether or not you want me to. Fill these positions or whether you want them frozen for the year. And then the second part is, I do think that uh in a future meeting at some point, we need to have conversation about whether dare is. Um the best option for our limited resources. You know, I'm a.
I was just gonna say. You're gonna be happy with me right now, okay?
So anyway, it, you know, it's, it's a gr- it's a good program. I enjoy having it. I think it's good for the community. But I would say the yo-yo effect in the dare program that we've had over the last several years due to staffing is. It's not good for the program. It's not good for the officer teaching it, and it's not good for the community.
Agreed.
I'm agree. I'm like freezing them as the best thing to do. And reassessing for there and or maybe CTC can fill that, you know.
I don't know if CTC goes in school sport.
I actually had the fifth grade elementary school teacher reach out to me. Um because we had dare for part of the year and then it went away through the yo-yo thing we talked about. Um she actually would have heard requested that we look seriously at trying to write that back. She said, they they've been running into issues this year. That is taught in the dare program, that the kids. That didn't go through it, they've had problems this year, they've not had in years past. Because the dare program has that kind of value and is able to to teach these kids skills that they use. Later on, right?
Most people don't realize the dare program went through a revamp in two thousand and nine and is designed to teach kids. How do you build to stand firm on whatever decisions they make, can make healthy decisions. It's not about, don't do drugs.
The current program is evidence based.
It's way different.
Yeah.
Scientifically evidence based through social.
I I'm a huge supporter of the dare program and and I'm a little reluctant to to abandon it so quickly, I guess. I would really need to understand why we think that it's, it's not.
If you read the memo, we don't have a trained person this year, so. Okay, so so I think that.
Well, they would still have to go through.
Make it through.
The only, the only way I could get it this year would be if we hired now and well. There is, there is that, that would be, that would be problematic, but there is, that is something, I guess I shouldn't say our only option when that is. Potentially one, but realistically, it would be if we opened it up and we had a lateral hire who could start. You know, basically immediately, then we could get someone in the training for July and be ready to teach in the first of the year, but historically, that's not what we see.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, so budgetarily speaking, what what the the question and decision are. Is if you freeze it, meaning it's still allotted, you know, there there are positions there approved for the PD. We're just freezing it and not filling those positions for one year. Um so you would wanna count that money saved as one-time money. Cause, cause in the following fiscal year, the assumption is, is we would fill those positions.
I guess.
However. I was just gonna say, however, if you, if you let go of one of, you know, the the programs, either traffic, you know, or dare. Then then what we're saying is we're eliminating that program and you're either, again, keeping the position to be assigned to something else. Or you're, you're reducing the the sworn officers in the door.
And realistically, what happens if we end up next year just absorbing these two positions as an example, one into patrol, one into investigations. If we absorb those two, then basically what we would be saying is next year, when we would be scheduled to ask for two to keep up with growth, we would only be asking for one. And we would be, because we would have plussed up on patrol and investigations already with these two positions.
So so we're basically just setting it up to pay more taxes next year.
Or not.
Well, if you. If you've, if you freeze it for right now, which. So then there's no impact to patrol or investigation. It gives you time to sort out whether or not the dare program's actual bio, you know, viable and whether we're gonna be able to continue doing that. It just gives us time, I think, to make a.
It gives, it gives time to, it gives a year to go by, so you can pay more taxes the following.
What it does for the decrease in deviant behavior in our schools, though, is. Like Jordan said, teachers, they'll reach out within a few months, finding out that it's not coming back, because.
They are asking for help.
It's a big deal.
And that's, it's true, and I mean, and and.
Dare program, when I went through the dare program, well, it's different now. It's different than when you went through it, and that's the thing.
The the easy answer for you to look at on this one, though, is that the likelihood that dare exists next year is very slim.
I I agree, simply because of the, but the timing, the way it's going, but but. If we just don't do anything for a year, we'll be having this exact same conversation next March or next.
Like we did two years.
What he's asking for right now is just a decision on this year's budget.
Yeah.
We're not committing past this year.
I think you can freeze it for a while, but.
Jordan, to address your concern, we, I mean, if you, if the council wanted to, you could also freeze it for half the year. And then we could try and hire after January to get somebody in for July. I mean, there are different possibilities with it. This was just the. Ways to pare it down, if you, if you will, like this was the, this was the big piece, but there are ways to pare it down if that's what you wanna do as well for.
I I just wanna make sure that we're not having the same conversation next April because it's too late to hire someone for there. So I I I think.
Two years ago for, yeah.
Yeah, and it happens all the time. It's.
People are so miscon- have such a misconception about what the dare program is now that it's so easily swept aside. Unless you talk to the teachers and the people that teach it and the kids that have actually taken the dare program, and they'll all tell you differently. But being adults, we're stubborn and we don't wanna listen to those people.
That's kinda where I am, so I think I made my, I'm like there.
All right, um this is not a decision tonight, but I think that what I'm hearing is we go forward with the intent to freeze those positions. It's part of the budget overall package.
Yeah.
At least part of.
So here's the next, uh well, the next is, I wanna, yeah, you're you're good, thank you. I wanna open it up for discussion from the council of any part of the budget that we have not discussed. Keep it in mind that next meeting, we have to approve a tentative budget. That is not a final budget. But it means that we will go into the next budget with whatever we approve as the baseline. Still tweak it in June, but you have to have a baseline that's published, so. With that in mind, is there anything else you would like to discuss between now and uh the next meeting? Uh except for the final question, because I want that to be last.
Sorry, which was the final question?
We'll get there. We'll get there.
I I don't get to go there.
No, no, I I is there anything here that you would like to discuss or any part of the budget you want to bring up for discussion? It's up to you.
No, I I don't have any specific questions at the moment.
Okay, so then the last question is. Seems that we have to put together a tentative budget. Are you planning to consider a property tax rate increase? Because we have to start the noticing procedure. Again, it does not have to finish, but we have to notify the county that we're intending to go forward. With that in mind.
So for me, the issue that we have is the there there was one budget presented that was considered a no tax option. It was actually a deficit budget. Which I am not comfortable with. I'm not I'm not comfortable leveraging the future of the city just to try and. That I mean, I I I don't I'm not willing to work like Washington. I'm not gonna work in a deficit. We need to make sure our bound our budget is balanced. And so I don't see how there's a way to go forward with at least not holding the rate, which I still don't consider a tax increase. The city has their own definition or the state has their own definition. I don't see a way to go forward with with the. The budget that you had presented.
But even upholding the rate.
It's still not enough.
It doesn't do anything.
Fifteen thousand.
You're right.
That doesn't change anything. Is it worth the the hearing?
So neither of those two uh do ni- neither of those balance a budget, which we legally have to do.
Uh but we legally can balance the budget.
Using our rainy day.
Using our rainy day fund. And so I just to let you know that. Because I've been wrestling with this and talking to other mayors and trying to understand why. We're all going through some very serious pain right now because inflation hit two years ago in a really bad way. And the fallout is that we cannot afford the same things today that we could prior to that. And so we're all in a difficult situation. So I actually went to the ULTC uh major conference last week. And made quite the pitch to other people. And in certain sessions, made the pitch that we have to address the state tax policy because it's the only one. It is the only one that addresses things this way. And uh the league was not supportive, but I was overwhelmed in the halls between sessions. With other cities in support of we have to make a stand to the legislature that we need to revise the policy. To legitimately discuss what it is.
Agreed.
So if all these other people that were overwhelming you.
Yeah.
Say something also, then wouldn't the league be required to listen?
Well, that's part of our discussion and part of the things that um because I brought that up. I brought that up in writing the weekend over the over the weekend with the league. I have not received a response yet. But I was informed that they would like to sit down and talk because. And and I had an extensive discussion with the league leadership and uh after the evening uh meal, we still had time. And I just said, we sat down for quite a while and discussed this and. They're concerned about giving up political capital for something else. And I said, what? Does it matter? Cause this what matters more to cities than fair representation of what we're actually talking about? The fact that we have to advertise the same rate as last year as a tax increase is what's caused all of the inflation deficit. Over forty years and because forty years we have had this go. So. Anyway, we've talked about this. There are enough cities right now who are in this difficult situation because of inflation. That we just wanted them to look at this. Now, one of the suggestions, I'll be very clear, one of the league. Elders, shall we say, not a not somebody in charge, somebody's been there a long time, came back and said, well, this policy's been working for forty years. And if you. I I agree with you. And and I said, I said, okay, so what are the you know, what are the problems? He's, oh. You don't understand. Their legislator is talking about doing away with property tax entirely. And he said, he said, that should scare you. I said, it doesn't. Because while that is the source that cities are funded, it would force them to just figure out. What method they will allow cities to be funded with, which might be a more accurate thing. If you look at the last five years of the legislature. They shook up the way that they funded things dramatically, meaning that things that couldn't pay for other funds are now re reshuffled. And what it did overall is they could give tax deductions. I think the same thing would be true here if they would make this more relevant. And I don't care what they come up with as long as it works and is honest. Because the way that this is misrepresented, where for some people it's a tax increase, for others, it's not off the same property tax. That's the problem.
Yeah, but none of that matters for the discussion tonight.
No, but the point is, okay, so the point is, I am not in favor of raising taxes uh uh under this situation. Because holding the rate, which should be automatic anyway, because that's the way that every so many people think it happens anyway, which it doesn't. It doesn't do anything. It doesn't pay for something that we have on our need list. Why raise the taxes if it's insufficient?
I I'm actually the opinion that we should present the balanced budget without defending the rainy rainy day fund.
Hey, you can say that, but we had to do it last year. And the reason why I'm okay with doing it a second year. Is first of all, down at that conference, I also learned that. Most cities are living off that fund all the time. It it is a regular thing. We have been one of the stalwarts who've left the rainy day fund alone for the most part. The second part of that is that we're doing it with a plan. We're doing it because we have on the horizon an increase in sales tax that we're expecting. And we're hoping that if the rest of the development that we're working in con- conjunction with this happens, we won't need to and we can take care of it.
It's a lot of wishing and hoping.
It is, but if you don't go through for something, what do you do?
But I I thought that the plan continued those projections and there was still a problem. Is that not right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean.
I'd like to hear an answer to that.
I'm gonna defer to Steve on that because what I understand is that some of that as an estimate was factored in. We could do better than that. We could do worse than that.
It's not what I I heard it was.
Yeah, so in the retreat, the projections um handled the the compensation plan, but what it didn't take into account is new positions. And that that's that was part of the issue was. Hiring. In the next five years, we're gonna need to hire potentially hire new employees with the growth of the city.
But but we're talking on the revenue side, right?
Yeah.
We're we're talking, yes, in account of Costco, but once Costco goes in, we don't know what else is going to go in around that Costco.
Sure.
Costco is a is a powerhouse retailer and it's it has the potential to draw another powerhouse retailer if not.
A lot of a lot of hoping for the future, and I agree.
It is a lot of hoping for the future, but budgets are done one year at a time.
Sure.
If we find that it's not, then you look at it again next year. It's not.
Raise taxes.
We're it's not like we're we're saying.
But we're that's what we're doing one year at a time. We're looking at next year's budget now, but you're bringing in all the hopes and wishes for the following years. We don't have that right now. What we have is what's in front of us.
That's what a projection is. It's hopes and which wishes. That's what a projection is.
Yeah, the projection for this year says there's a huge deficit.
Yeah.
And the projection for five years says the city can't hire anyone.
But yet, in the in the chart, we saw we saw city revenue going up each year. Yeah, how is that revenue going up? Cause it just, I mean.
It's focused on new sales.
Sure, new cells. So how how remind me how much we're anticipating Costco will bring in in an average year? If I remember right, it's about six hundred K?
No, that's the first partial year. Average on Costco's are for this size and this size community. Their projections were nine, seven to a million, one. So somewhere in the million dollar range in tax revenue. We managed with the Pid construction to keep all of that. So that we're not using any of that future tax from sales tax to pay back any of the infrastructure. So that's a big change in the positive to the way we see this.
Sure.
I feel comfortable banking on the fact that Costco will bring other retailers because. I already have a list of people who want to meet them and talk about these parcels, and it is longer than the number of parcels we have. And I just have to get them to break ground and they're close.
And with the zero tax, how much is the deficit?
Uh just under a million, nine hundred forty thousand.
So even with Costco, we will just barely break even. That what I just heard? That's assuming that we hit the one point one million projection. So that still doesn't sound like planning for the future.
And that's if everything goes and that's if everything goes accordingly and they break ground like now.
And and to be clear, next year, we're not expecting to see any revenues that we might get some revenue based on sometime in December. Is when we might start seeing some.
Sales tax revenue to the new year, probably.
Yeah, so.
Know if they'll make it by the season or not. They've.
Yeah.
We just don't know. So our projection is that the be conservative. And say that we'll count on it after the new year.
So if we had Costco for a full year, we could get a million and we might almost break even. Likely, we won't see it until sometime next year, which means we're gonna have a six to seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. And we're gonna just cover that other any day fund. That's our plan.
So uh what's what do we constitute as a rainy day? Is this our rainy day?
Yep.
Like let's I mean, that's one thing that we haven't really discussed. What do we consider a rainy day? You're saying all the other cities are living off of their rainy day fund. We keep this for a reason, for a rainy day. Is this our rainy day?
It gets us through a period of growth where we may be able to be better and may is the word. It's not shall. But we may be able to come out of this the other side. And why raise taxes now? Because that's permanent. If we may come out the other side, okay.
It preserves the rainy day fund. So that's why.
All right, and I'll be honest, if let's say we 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 balance the budget this year. And next year, when everything is, a- as you've said, and the budgets are all balanced, then we'd have to do zero tax increase, maybe a couple of years. But I I I'm not willing to leverage the future based on the hopes and dreams. But again, we can reevaluate in one year and maybe next year it'll be zero or we'll lower them. That would be fantastic.
I'm also basing this.
I actually looked up Costco's in other cities and I've had Steve pull this information for me. Costco's in other cities around the state. And their ta- property tax doesn't go down. It doesn't. It it continually just slowly goes up until about ten years after and then it levels off. And that's, I mean, I've got it. We can look at it, but.
Their property tax or sales tax?
No, the the property tax in the city, it doesn't it doesn't go down. It doesn't anything for about ten years after they get a Costco. And then then it starts to kind of level up. Uh but otherwise, it just kind of keeps going up until then. And usually that's when other businesses happen to come in like Bountiful's. Theirs tap property tax didn't level off until they got their dispensary in twenty twenty and that's when they got a dramatic tax. Uh sales tax increase. But other than that, it didn't. Their property tax, it didn't do for the residents what the residents thought it was gonna do for them. It just got you more stuff.
The Costcos that have been built in the last decade have all had tack or sales tax repayment agreements. With the city, we do not. We are the first and the one that will be different. We do not have a sales tax payback agreement.
And that infrastructure through that head is gonna i- is set up for that entire area.
Yes.
I feel like a lot of our residents feel like this is gonna lower their getting a Costco is gonna mean their property tax is gonna go down. It I I don't feel like that's how that's not how it works. It's it's not gonna benefit the residents in that way. It's just gonna bring more stuff.
The hope is that it prevents it from going up.
It's still going up in the other cities. I I mean, I don't not it in all the other ones that I looked into, it was still going up after.
I'm gonna also say this, I am very uncomfortable raising taxes. Again, I'm not, I don't have a vote on this, but. I'm uncomfortable raising taxes after a large increase last year. And three of the last four years were all double digit increases that I'm uncomfortable with. If we were raising it to hold the rate at four percent or six percent. Then I wouldn't feel like that's unreasonable, but the amount that we have raised in the last three years. Granted, for some very good causes like EMTs and paramedics and, you know, all those things. I just don't believe that our citizens can keep.
Necessary causes are good causes. They were necessary.
Using that reasoning, we might as well just burn all the rainy day fund and lower the damn taxes.
I think Chief Atkins has shown a way that he can cut some. In our retreat, Presta mentioned things that would keep things, you know, status quo, that it's not gonna be the end of the world.
We are trying to build a regional park right now.
Yeah.
So.
I feel like it does validate that it a rainy day fund consists of when it gets. When it when it gets to a point that you just can't afford it. You gotta dip into it.
Right.
And I I think that's probably now. That if 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 at any point, what would we si- since I've been on city council, this would be what I would consider our rainy day.
I agree, and I don't think this is the time that we should raise taxes at all. I think that we should have a zero.
But at the same time, I don't want to go into another year in a deficit.
So let me clarify one other thing that you may or may not all be aware of, but. The state pers- prescription for a rainy day fund has a bottom and a top. And we have been at the full amount of our rainy day fund. There is a maximum that we can keep and we have been at that maximum. Until this last year for a long time. So and we have continued to stay at that maximum rainy day fund. So dipping into it a little bit. Just gives us room to grow it later if things pick up. I mean. We are not talking about going below the minimum. We're not even talking about going the middle of that.
What's our rainy day fund at? Steve, do you?
Dollar wise?
Yes.
Six to seven million, seven nine.
And we're talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar. We're talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. And what is the minimum we're required to keep?
Statutory is five percent. We have a a policy that's two months reserve or sixteen points.
I I feel like this is like my godfather right now. Like what do you what do we keep it all for? We're not gonna need it to use it at some point. And this is that point and that's a lot and we can cover that and we're just letting it hang out? Are we at least getting interest off of that rainy day money?
We do.
Cause it's just sitting there.
Our citizens just don't have the appetite for another.
Drop down then. Drop down and cut their rig.
Why don't we? Why don't we not? Why don't we?
Trying to me the flaw in the reason.
There's no flaw in my reasoning because I do feel like Syracuse continues to grow.
Then why don't we raise the the tax? Why don't we raise the taxes by the maximum every year? Whatever is requested, we fund with a tax increase. It's the same. It's it's just the other side of the same argument. If you're gonna say, hey, let's let's just give them a tax cut and go the other way. Well, what's the what's the other side of that coin? Every year, we fund everything that's wanted and desired and we just. We we don't take any consideration of the citizens and just raise, raise, raises.
I feel like that's excessive what wanted and desired. No, we don't ever do what's wanted and desired.
I'm saying that's the other side of that argument.
Like the extreme other side.
But that's the extreme of the other side is saying, well, let's just deplete the fund and give everybody a tax break.
I don't think nine hundred thousand dollars is gonna make it's.
Brett just posed, I'm countering that point.
I don't think nine hundred thousand dollars is gonna make too much of a difference in our rainy day fund.
No, I don't have any objections. I don't have any objections to using a bit of the rainy day fund.
So w- we need a fire station with three firefighters. Is that what we need?
Uh we so to to fully staff the fire sta- the new fire station, you need nine. Is it adequately stacked with three?
No.
Oh, that's depends on what how much service you expect out of it.
Tell me why your house has three firefighters and called adequately stacked.
What I'm suggesting is that like all things, uh we fund. Partial of service and grow as we can afford it, rather than try to fund everything from the get go.
I I said firefighters.
I feel like those nine firefighters, and I said this last year, that it. It it's a bad idea to hope for this grant that we keep getting turned down for.
Well, I I do think strategically, we should at least try. And and if we put them in the budget, we are no longer qualified to even apply. We should apply. We should apply, see what happens and.
We had the same conversation last year and the year before.
Well, and what's, what's the life, what's, what's the life expectancy of a firehouse? So for one year, you're, you're partially staffed and that's the end of the world.
Is it adequate or is it not? If it's adequate, I, I sure hope there isn't some fire sometime in the next year. Well, then why do we have a second one?
Cause we're growing. So we don't have to grow in twenty four hours.
Is it adequate or not?
I think.
Well, I, I would like to hear from the chief.
I think that's an unfair ask of him, but go ahead, chief.
It's not really unfair, it's just what it is.
How is that unfair?
Uh, here's the reason. He understand, and I'm defending Aaron here to this degree. He understands what a fire station fully staff should look like. Is it adequate is a question of, do we gain from having partial staffing? Yes, we do. But is that adequate? Depends on who you ask.
Well, he's asking him.
Oh, if it's, if you're just asking the chief, he's gonna say we need all positions staffed.
No, he's right there.
Cause I've been talking to him for weeks. I mean, he tells me this is a tough question. Go ahead, Aaron, answer all you want, but I'm trying to defend him too, that. You're putting him in a position where the question isn't fair.
How, how is asking a fire chief, who this is what he does? And asking him if there's adequate staffing, how is that an unfair question?
Complete the question adequate request.
Adequate for protection of the citizens of Syracuse.
They're.
But you're on the spot, sorry.
Three, three firefighters in that station will staff either an engine or an ambulance. That's all it's gonna staff. Um, to have the complete staffing of an engine and an ambulance, it's gonna require nine more. So it's the level of service that the, the council chooses on behalf of the citizens. What they want out of that fire station.
So. Could, could you help?
For everyone, why, why nine, like the, this, the.
Yeah.
All the crews and the ships.
Yeah, so as we all know, it's twenty four hour operation and it runs on three shifts so that we can run twenty four seven. So really, when most play, when most. Different departments in the city ask for a full time position, it's one person. For us to fill a one person, it takes or a one position, it's three full time people. That's why. The quantity is on that ask and, uh. Um, they do, they do operate on the twenty four hour or the forty eight hour shifts, but they do operate. Twenty four seven, this is part, I haven't had, had a chance to prepare, but. What I'm saying is, we base all, our standards off of the National Fire Protection Agency. What's safe and what's adequate for our firefighters, one or two firefighters can't put out a house fire. We do rely, we do have another station that can come in, but that station has gotten so busy with other calls, they may or may not be available to help. We do rely on outside agencies to come in, but they are also increasing their call volume.
And we have to pay them when they come in, right?
No, we do not pay them. No, we do not pay them. We have a mutual aid. We do help them out. So if they get stressed. North Davis Fire District gets stressed out and they have more calls in their community than they can handle. We go and help them out. So we do help each other out and that, those numbers are increasing as well. So all of the numbers, the call volumes are increasing. Um, are, we're, right now, I just looked at it, as we are sitting today, we're three hundred calls, three hundred and nine calls. Higher right now today from January one than we were last year. So our call volume is continuing to, continuing to increase.
Is that, is that just?
It is.
The city of Syracuse.
That does count, that does take into account the ER that we do have here, that is added six to eight hundred calls a year.
Yeah.
To our community, but something we can't take away. So, I'm majority here. But regardless, that's why the ask for the firefighters, that's, it's based off of statistics and based off of standards. That we have to keep firefighters safe and that's, that's what we get by having only three people in that station.
So, so let me have a follow up question. Are the standards being met with three firefighters in that station?
The, the standard to, for fire engine response, no. For ambulance response, yes.
So we're fifty, fifty and it's not for the, it's, it's temporary.
Yeah, it's a year. Let's have a.
Let's hope your health doesn't burn down in a year.
We have a fire station, they'll put it out.
And they're not busy.
I wish we could schedule disasters.
Right. A national standard.
I, I just.
Well, let's hope it's someone's that, you know.
Built this second fire station, this wouldn't be a discussion right?
But it is a discussion, it is there, it's not meeting standard. And I'm not going to vote for a budget where we can't even staff our own fire station.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm out on that.
Okay.
We will stop it though.
Okay.
It'll just kind of get.
We have applied for that grant for three years and got denied every time and every time someone says, but we will stop it. Well, we haven't yet.
Okay, next year the money will be there.
Yeah, we hope.
Are you being sarcastic?
Yes, yes, hundred percent. Because that's the same thing we've heard for the last three years.
Hey, so we have a very clear vote for Brett. That he is not going forward with the budget that is no tax increase. So that means we have one vote for truth and taxation hearing. Is there any others that are for the truth and taxation hearing?
I don't see a way you get around it.
I don't either.
Hey, so then we advertised that we will have a truth and taxation hearing because that's three. Alright, so the, the next question we have to finish because we have to complete the advertising is. What are you gonna advertise is the increase? And what are you going to advertise justifies?
See how his tone changed dramatically now? Yeah.
You have to answer those questions.
I'm saying, you don't notice how your tone changed in there, like how you're talking to people?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I, I think that we should hold the tax rate. And use the small amount that we need left from the rainy day.
That's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
It doesn't pay.
It doesn't do anything. If that's all you're for. I- it, it doesn't.
How about I have my own opinion?
I'm just saying.
Okay, cool. Hey.
Okay.
I let you go on and on, don't say anything. I'm, I'm welcome to rebuttal anything you say.
I like my opinion.
Absolutely, absolutely you are.
Okay, let's, let's bring it back to one voice at a time for the record and so that we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's gonna be hard on.
Especially Julie, I can't hear you half the time, so speak up.
So. Uh, we have one for hold the rate. What other options are on the table? I'm just trying to. To.
I'm okay with what we discussed, which is a no tax increase using a rainy day fund.
I'm okay with that too.
Hey.
I, I agree with what you were going to earlier where the state needs to actually go with. The holding the rate is adjusting for inflation. Most people think.
I agree. Do, most people think it happens.
Most people think it happens anyway. Because, well, what they don't know is the state locks it in. If we collect a hundred dollars this year and inflation goes up ten percent. The state would actually lower the rate and we'd get a hundred dollars next year. That does not account for inflation that is sticking your head in the sand.
I agree.
So holding the rate is the way the state should ju- should, um, define. As a no tax increase because it's the same rate. I, I, I wish that anytime I got a, a salary increase by whatever two percent, I wish that I got my taxes. My taxes deducted by that amount. The state does not play by the same rules that they expect us to follow. So I'm okay holding the rate and then going forward. If we need to dip in a little bit, I, I think. If, if that's kind of the consensus of some of my peers, I think that's a valid way forward, but I think not holding a rate. Which I still define as no tax increase is the correct way to go. Otherwise.
Yep.
We have two for hold the rate, but I, anybody who goes out of this meeting has to have at least three supported at this moment, so. I have two for no, two for hold the rate and one for, I'm assuming Brett's saying it's not enough, so.
It, it isn't enough. I wanna clear.
Respectfully.
Right. Yeah, I believe that it isn't enough. If you're not moving and you're not moving, then I'll go. Yeah, I mean, if that's where we're at, then I'll, I'll go, but I disagree with what that.
I, I, I think we're, to a certain extent, we are doing a disservice by not moving at all. Because we do have a understaffed fire station. We are building a regional park that. We all agreed to and that the mayor strongly advocated that we're, is gonna need park employees. And we cannot just expect the staff just to pick up the slack.
Without it being compensated for it. Yeah, that's ridiculous.
So, so, what I, I, what, what I see this budget doing is kicking a can down the road, but if that is the favor of the mayor and the majority of the council, then. I'm willing to, to kick the can down the road. You guys can deal with it.
I feel the same way. I don't think it's, I don't think it's enough either, but it, we do have a rainy day fund and.
Sure.
I understand that you don't see the point in holding the rate, be it if it's only a hundred and something thousand dollars. But I think at the very least, we should hold the rate every year so we don't end up in situations like this.
I, I, I don't disagree with that and I don't disagree with what the mayor's saying. I, I think the league of. Uh, cities needs to address that with the legislature.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that's not part of it. We can't do anything about that.
It will be labeled as a tax increase.
It would, it would, but holding the rate, just like Jordan said, it's not a tax increase and people, it's just labeled that way through the state. And if they would label it correctly, we wouldn't have this problem, but holding the rate is what we should do every year. But our rainy day fund is so high up there, I don't see that there's a problem dipping it.
So, so is there a chance then that if we do not get this, uh, grant? That we're willing to use a rainy day fund, it's one time fund, so you, this, you're. You're locking in a tax increase for next year, but use rainy, rainy day fund to staff the fire station.
I think that that conversation is valid, but only after we see where the application goes. I think if we try to make a plan for that, we're actually in violation of the application because.
Are we?
The application we file says that we do not have it in our plan. So if we make a plan.
I, I agree. I just want to discuss this because, wh- while we, we can't put it in our budget, if we do nothing. Again, you're sticking your head in the sand. I mean, we have a, a, a clear and present need. We have a rainy day fund. If, if it's, if the rainy day fund is, is. Uh, as you're, as you're saying is, is overfunded, then this seems like a rainy day to. Put firefighters in a fire station.
Uh, from my point of view, I'm willing to have that after the.
Fair.
The application. I feel like I would be in violation if I were to try to engage in a plan. And then try to file, uh, something that said, I have no plan.
Understand where you're going with that, but just realize this is a clear and present danger.
Way to leave it up in the air. You can't plan anything. You just gotta wait on us.
No, we are planning to file the application as if we do not have this. And if we don't get it, we should be able to react.
I've not heard. So right now that grant is actually not even.
It's not even open, but we'll find out.
We're just hoping it does.
Alright.
I think you have your three.
Alright, so we have three that are willing to hold the rate. Now you have to answer the question, why are you holding the rate? What is it for? Now, it cannot be for just the sake of holding the rate. You actually have to name to the public in the, in the hearing, what it is you intend to fund with. The money you gain from this rate increase.
We're not funding anything.
Do you understand what the, the deficit, the, the, the million dollar deficit is not funding?
I understand.
Yeah, show me that list. I'm sure I can come up with a few things.
Alright, well, we have to leave this meeting with instructions to count or to.
Yeah, but you didn't give us any. Yeah, there's none of that in here.
Okay. Uh, that is in the packet in the form of the proposed budget, so look at that list and tell me what you want back in. That is about the same amount of money.
Uh, I'm gonna have to get back, I mean, I could sit here and look through.
Or yes, to, or if it's to pay some of that, to fill some of that gap.
It is absolutely.
Like you can either add, you can either add some of the requested.
So we would have less deficit.
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna say that in this case, then we're gonna have to come forward in the next meeting. Proposing something of equal cost.
Agree.
That you can agree or disagree to, but that's the only way to go about this.
Totally understand, but I, I'm just not comfortable with a million dollar debt, so.
I, I think we'll want some clarification on if, if we're gonna save money from the discussion of the, those two positions that we're freezing.
Wasn't that already in there though?
No.
It's in the budget, the full, the full cost is in that.
Yeah, so that's.
So that's money we will not have.
That's actually a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
Like two eighty nine or something like that.
It's two forty on here, but.
Thirty nine, yeah.
If we end up hiring them partway through the year, we won't realize that whole savings.
Yeah, right. I do think that their programs.
Okay, well, the instruction on that one was we were gonna freeze it, so we're gonna, are we changing?
No, no, cause that would be.
For one year.
You're gonna freeze one of them for sure and one of them probably only for six months.
So, so that would be a one time saving.
One time savings and.
Where do you put that money? Is it just to fill that deficit yet?
Yes.
And then whatever it doesn't fill, then we pull from the rainy day fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, yeah, for now, I, I think there's some, I, I will say that at the. At the budget meeting, it was very clear which way the mayor wanted to go. And so I don't think there was a lot of discussion about any post staffing positions.
Anything proposed.
Yeah, there was nothing proposed except for a, a zero percent. And so, yeah, I, I'd say we don't have the data to make the decision right now.
In, in, in the packet there, there's, there's the original request, which is the nine firefighters, hard maintenance, uh, worker. And a park maintenance facility add. I think, and then we, we had some.
All the requests were on the list.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in there.
Second part was what the recommendation from the mayor was.
Right, but you're right, it wasn't a lot of discussion, but it, it was in the.
Yeah, I, I do remember the slide flashed up quickly and I need to, there were a lot of slides in that presentation.
What does this tax increase look like to our citizen?
The answer is I don't know yet, cause I don't.
Yeah, we don't know.
The values are from the land.
And this was brought up at ULCT too.
The, the state lets you know literally weeks before your meeting.
Them the week of.
The week of the meeting.
So they've told us that they're not gonna let us know.
You're literally set up to fail here.
Uh, we've been in through a, a budget approval meeting before we even had certified. That's.
Ridiculous.
It is, but they, they told us.
They go right down to the line of property sales, don't they? Like to average that. Like right down to the timeframe.
Increase in property.
Property values, yeah. They, they wait till very last minute to average all that. Cause it always changes.
And where the hundred and fifty came from is, you know, just Googling what, what. Uh, values of land have changed last year. It was around two to three percent.
So we're guessing.
I can see.
Yeah, it hasn't changed much, so.
State will give us the official word, but.
I can work with the best data that I have and right now it's not right.
Yeah, Steve's made a quick estimation, which that's all we can do with that way. I wouldn't suspect it would be vastly different from that number, like it'll, it'll probably be different, but I, I, you know, it's not gonna come back.
It's in the ballpark.
It's not gonna be fifteen percent, no, you know.
And, and I'm not expecting that a huge tax increase, but I'm saying inflation is real and, and holding the rate adjusts for inflation. I don't, I don't think we need a huge tax increase, but I do think, again.
And I think it's a rainy day.
The, the city, the, the city experiences inflation same as everybody.
Alright, I think that we have our position for the next meeting. Uh, there's no vote taken tonight, that's official, it will be in the next meeting. Um, but we will start advertising as discussed. And with that, we are adjourned for the.